It is six thirty-four, we're gonna call this meeting to be ordered. Meeting at, uh, Cleveland Center.
The United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ in its name.
Oh, that's right. The board, uh, voted to approve two compromises. COVID students that we had, they had some issues. They've been addressed, but that settlement, um... Oh, that's right. We ratified a tentative agreement for the district and substitute teachers as well. I haven't entered any compensation. Okay, do we have any, uh, acknowledgement? Oh, wait, sorry, do you have to check who we have? Any discussion on adopting the agenda? All in favor? Aye. Aye, all those?
Yes, we're gonna go ahead and start. We have, um, two, uh, certificated teachers who received the honor roll award. And so, um, if Shelby Delaney, are you here? Can you see me? Yeah, Shelby. So Shelby is being recognized tonight for, um, being on the teacher honor roll in the California's newspaper for her outstanding contributions to our students and families for Salinas City Elementary School District. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good to see you again.
Our second, uh, our second honorary tonight, you guys aren't done yet here. Might as well, I'll get them up here because we're gonna do a lot. We have Mindy, um, who's she, Mindy in the, in the room there? Mindy is also one of our teachers being recognized in our local paper again for your outstanding contributions to our students and families in our district. So, um, tonight, we also, uh, part of my superintendent report, which I won't repeat. This morning, we started off with over, I want to say pretty close to six hundred employees at Sherwood Hall. And, um, it was a great opportunity for us to honor our own, um, recognize those teachers who have earned years of services from, uh, five years to thirty-five years. Is Sarah Witten in the room? Is Sarah? Has been with us for thirty-five years. So that was great. But in addition to that, we, um, wanted to, I wanted basically to start a new tradition and hopefully it will continue on from year to year. And so we, we made up some awards and classified, I mean, we have awards that, um, covered the whole span of our employee, um, ranks. And so, some of the awards is, uh, one of the awards for our classified site support staff is the Lasso Award. We named this the Lasso Award and I don't miss Antonio. So Antonio, uh, received, um, a plaque like this. You can't take this one because we get to keep it. You got your services for it. You can show the board members what you received. So he got this, uh, plaque with the Lasso Award. And I didn't have to bring their actual symbolic award, but he has a wooden plaque with the Lasso around it. And, um, he gets to keep the Lasso for a year. And then next year, the next Lasso Award winner will get to keep that. So we hope that you proudly display, um, your award. And again, he was selected from the site classified, um, ranks as our Lasso Award winner. Congratulations. So yes, um, is Sue McCluskey here today?
Sue is ill.
Okay, so Sue also got this award. And she got, um, the movers and the makers and the baker award. And since it went to food services, she will get this to display in her office for, um, the year. And, um, next year, if we get a mover, the award will have to look a little bit different, right? So maintenance, operations, uh, transportation and food service is in the category of the movers, the makers and the bakers awards. And we believe that they are the core of our district. Without them, we would not have materials, equipment and, um, certainly not have kids, um, being transported to our schools. And so we're very grateful for those category of employees. Our next employee award was building blocks. Building blocks here? Do we have Alice Trevino in here? So Alice Trevino, um, oh, by the way, these are all these little quotes that are up here are what people said, the nominee form, as she talked about each one of these categories. Speaking of badge, Antonio, I had to do that this morning.
Okay. I thought I was Lydia, but I'll work on it.
Right after that last.
I got it. I think it's there. And then I just have to get back to the machine. I'm getting there, getting there, really, I know. Oh, play from current slide, there.
Yeah.
Okay, through the back arrow, through the back arrow. Back all the way to.
There we go. So Antonio, um, these are the things that hit, that the reason that he was nominated because he's dependable, he's committed to his job. He always has a positive attitude. He's a problem solver. He finds that solution. He's a hard worker. He's an asset to our school community and he goes the extra mile. So those were, um, the attributes that were certainly talked about in his nomination. So thank you, Antonio. We'll give another round of applause. And Sue, um, even though she's on here, she's a dedicated employee. She's always there. She keeps it together. She is, um, has an exhibits, great interpersonal skill. She's a team player. She's always on time and always there. She's the heart of the food service department. So, um, for that reason, she was nominated for this. Our building blocks award, which is our site instructional staff, um, instructional assistants. And Alice Trevino won in this category. She's always thinking and planning ahead. She cares deeply about her students. She is a great instructional assistant. She knows how to best meet the needs of her students. And I'm not sure what the last line says there, but there's something in the last line.
Yeah, I can't see a question.
Okay.
You don't want me to try.
So we have, um, champion in education. We have two categories that we awarded to, um, certificated classroom teachers. And is Roberto Axamora here? Okay, so Roberto is not here, but again, this is what they said about Roberto. Um, he is a collaborator. He's always willing to share ideas and strategies. He sets high expectations for his students and he excels in reaching them. He goes out of the way to connect with his students, his parents and his staff. He keeps pushing himself to set new goals and he accomplishes those. And so for Roberto, he is a outstanding classroom teacher and most funness. And so let's hear it. Our second classroom teacher award is the global innovation award. And I see that Jeremy, Jeremy Galima is here. So Jeremy, can you come here? That is proud. Okay, so Jeremy, you can show the board what you received. And the, um, the cheers in the audience in this small little boardroom is loud, but can you imagine in front of six hundred employees? He almost got a standing ovation there. He's always competitive. You're the ultimate collaborator and innovator. You in-appropriate on technology in all aspects of teaching. You're the mastermind behind our Elgab tech plan. You're dedicated to the success of your students and you are a game changer. And for that, we honor you tonight, Jeremy. We have a customer service award and it is, um, Roxanne. So Roxanne. She exemplifies what true customer service looks like, feels like. And so can we get to it, see what people said? She's always calm and you're always available. And they even put your number there. Imagine I'll see you there at eight o'clock seven. You're professional, you're behind, you're friendly, you're resourceful, you're collaborative and you're a problem solver. You never say no and you just make it happen. So congratulations. So the second plaques that we've ordered here, that they're leaving here because they have their own in their possession, will be hung in our black bulletin boards that are out there. And hopefully we got some good pictures from this morning. And we'll be able to, um, post those on the certificated and classified bulletin boards. Um, we, next award is a pearl award. The pearl award typifies that precious gem, that employee who just, um, is prized above all, is always ready to support. This is our certificated support staff centralized across our district. So you can see, we try to cover all aspects of our district, the site level, centralized level. And you'll see in the last, um, our district level. So the pearl award goes to Cheryl Camoney. I should have had you bring your little awards, they're so cute. So Cheryl has this little flag with the pearl.
Actually, I heard and she's ordered me a beautiful strand of that.
So Cheryl, as you know, if you come to the board meeting and you read the agenda, she goes way above and beyond the call of duty. She's a connector, she's a partnership builder. She is, supports our most at-risk, um, students. For instance, this morning, she, after the, um, our welcome back breakfast, she said, United Way is there with, how many backpacks? Eight hundred backpacks waiting in the family resource center. She's always looking for those ways to bring those resources back into our district. She's an asset builder and for that, we thank you. So our, um, Skywalker lead learner award. Can you see Luke up here? So, um, the lead learners are for, um, one for a site administrator and another for a district administrator. And Ms. Jennifer Zansad. Yes, Luke Skywalker represents right.
I do, I do, definitely. He is leading the way. We're being very careful because his hand will fall off, but later we'll be making the hand thematic. He'll probably hold out for certain months. Wait, lead learner, maybe he'll be holding technology over.
So Jennifer, you were nominated by, um, for this award by your peers because you exhibit a true luck for your job. You're always willing to step up and serve in whatever capacity is asked of you. You're supportive, um, and you mentor new principals. You're a great communicator. You're witty and knowledgeable and you represent the heart of the district. So we had, um, two Luke Skywalkers. And this is the lead learner award for our district office administrator. And, um, the winner for this one was Ron Dillipier. So Ron is a Jedi, true Jedi in training. He's striving to be the master Jedi, but we'll see. You're knowledgeable, you're dependable, you're resourceful, you're flexible, you're open to new ideas, you're risk taker. You're always positive and inclusive and you're a collaborator and an innovator. And you're a grateful model. We congratulate you on your award. You can ask administrators about our Star Wars thing from last year if you want more information on that. So, um, again, we thank all of our awardees. Thank you for, those who were in the audience today for honoring our own. And we hope to make this a traditional award that will continue throughout the years. Great. Those conclude our acknowledgements for tonight.
So let's hear from our board organizations.
So could it be Mr. Kim, president, superintendent, board? Welcome back. S E T C had the chance to welcome about seventy new teachers, I believe, at the new teacher orientation, last week. And it was wonderful to see so many new teachers. I understand how difficult it was to fill all the positions. I know because I got a lot of calls and a lot of emails over the summer, a lot of interview panels. You know, and then I understand it was harder than it should have been. Some declined because of the years of service we offer. But, you know, years of service is something, um, we're negotiating and, um, and we hope to come to an agreement this year. I understand that item had been on the table a couple of months before the school year ended. Uh, but no agreement was, was reached. So I do hope that by the end of the school year, we have recent agreements that will bring in new teachers, um, as needed, and that it will encourage those who are already here to stay. And that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, I'm settling in still in the new position. I'm learning a lot. I did go to a training, new president's training, and I didn't know how much, I didn't really know. And now I know how much I still need to learn. But it is great. It, it motivated me and, um, I'm learning every day and I have a wonderful team here. And, um, you know, S E T C is also, uh, the event this morning was great honoring a lot of great teachers. But I'm just proud of all, all our hardworking teachers and, um, you know, I'm glad they're just getting the recognition that they deserve. So I hope we all have a wonderful school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. And as lovely as all that applause is, we are gonna try to move this meeting along. We all have families and places to be and we're gonna try to make these meetings as efficient as possible so that we can hold our applause everywhere. Do we have someone from classroom? Anyone from the substitute teachers? Okay. So, uh, mark the other floor.
Okay, just, um, a couple I'm not gonna talk about this morning, which was just a lovely opportunity again, just to welcome everybody back. We started off with the breakfast, um, provided by Chartwell. So that was wonderful. I would like to, um, just, um, inform the board that we received, um, two letters from, uh, CSBA, through the California School Board Association for our submitted, uh, two golden bell awards. Um, one was for our family resource center and the other one, it was for our PBIS. Uh, we should be notified within the next few weeks whether we are a recipient, a consideration for a recipient of the awards. And if we are, we will, um, be notified of an onsite visit that would occur in September, um, to both of those places to validate our applications. And then announcements of the winners would be made in October, followed by the award luncheon and the showcase held in San Francisco in December at, um, at CSBA's conference. So just your information. I'm not gonna go over a whole lot of things that we did in July, other than to talk about, beginning on Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, we began our administrator colloquium. And we, um, centered today's over leadership items. Over the summer, the principal and the vice principal, the administration was given a homework assignment and that was to read the happiness advantage. And so they came back and each one had a principle from the happiness advantage that they needed to present on. Um, I will say that we tried to integrate technology into our activities, which, um, proved to be extremely challenging and also very, very interesting. So on Thursday, um, July twenty-eighth, if you saw groups of administrators walking around, um, looking like they were doing the Pokemon game, we weren't. We were actually on a department hunt and, um, scanning QR codes around information around our district and there were questions that they had to answer. Again, that was very challenging, but lots of fun. On Friday, we concluded our week by doing some team building activities. Um, we started off at seven thirty in the morning, um, boarding a bus, um, a school bus. And we traveled, over fifty of us, on the bus to our fourteen sites. Uh, we also, um, visited the Veranda Doby, um, had lunch at the Steinbeck House and ended up at the first mayor's house. And we learned a lot about the traditions in Salinas. Um, I learned that the first mayor had two daughters and those two daughters were, um, teachers in our district and also that Salinas City was the first district, um, in this city. So, um, it was quite informative and a great day. So that was our week. Then the following week, we had, um, we had professional development going on for our teachers in the early part of the week. And as, um, Mr. Ramos stated, we had over seventy teachers that have been hired. Um, they can be interns, uh, they can be new to our district, uh, or they can be on a provisional intern, um, permit. And these seventy teachers met in here over the course of three days and were given lots of professional development and information around our district. So, um, that was quite a feat. Maybe Ms. Titus can fill us in. Uh, we were kind of up and down in the last. When I came back from vacation, we needed over twenty teachers to be hired and I felt that was a crisis moment. We were already putting Plan B into place. We didn't have to resort to Plan B, um, because we were pretty much combing the streets looking to see who we could hire. Even on Saturday at the beach, I was making phone calls to my son's friends, trying to convince them to come and teach special ed in our, in our district. So anyways, that, that's pretty much our week. It's been, uh, filled with a lots of energy, lots of optimism, and I am just so jazzed and so thrilled about this new year. We've got great new teachers, we've got a lot of enthusiasm and we've got great leaders at our school. So what more could I ask for? Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, we'll go to the other. Mr. Hoffman, welcome back.
Well, I'm glad to be back. Um, I zoned out this morning. I just followed my regular routine, so I missed the breakfast. I was planning to go, but it just went right by me. But I'm glad to be back and I'm sorry I missed. That's the first one I've missed. Anyway, I did it.
I don't know what I'm trying to do. The, um, I just wanted to let you know that, um, you know, over the summer, uh, it feels good to come back here and see some order where I got a chance to see children playing in the playgrounds at different schools. But at the same time, uh, you know, when you wanna read a document as thick as this, and I wanna thank Lydia, Lydia for, uh, delivering that and remodeling that at the same time. But it's, uh, it's worthy. It's worthy to look at and worthy to look at, uh, things that are difficult, but at the same time, things that are, uh, needed for the school district. Again, I got a chance to visit the Soladad School District this summer and visit with some colleagues of mine that you, we went to graduate school together. And, uh, they were looking for jobs and I said, you know what? Here's my business card. Make sure you send it. Send your resume over here or make a phone call with HR and, and, uh, get that appointment. Again, on behalf of my family and my friends and you all, God bless you. Thank you.
Musician?
Just that I was able to attend the breakfast this morning and it was awesome. It's just a wonderful place to be up on stage and look out on all the people who were so enthusiastic and excited to be back, um, even though you could kind of see in their faces that there was a little bit of, of regret over having their summer end. I think most of them looked really looking forward to this year. So that was great. I'm looking forward to the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year as well. Thank you.
First of all, I want to recognize and say hello to my former colleague on the Monterey County Board, the honorable John McPherson. And, uh, I want to wish everyone the best academic year possible. I know that at this time of the year, I was always looking forward to the upcoming year with great anticipation and, uh, because I knew that the year brought challenges, but it also brought many gifts in the form of students and parents and new staff. The other thing I wanna mention is that over the years, I compiled a tome or a huge binder of stories in Spanish and English. So any of you would like to invite me to your classroom? I'm here. And, uh, I'm also an expert at putting up wallpaper in the classroom. Many of you are not done. I have a lot of free time. So sign me up. I'm, uh, I'm on the web. And, uh, have a nice year.
That's wonderful. That's so great to see, uh, maybe the face is coming back. Welcome back and looking forward to a wonderful new school year. Let's see, do we have any replies? So, um, we're gonna move on to individuals. Individuals, uh, deciding to address the board about items that are not on the agenda.
Buenas tardes, Mesa Directiva. Muchas gracias por estar aquí presentes. Bienvenidos a nuestro distrito, que es un distrito de todas alinas que tiene armonía y paz. También, oh.
Good evening and welcome back. Looking forward for a great year and, uh, she said, she's looking for a successful school year and.
También enhorabuena bienvenida a todos los maestros, todos de corazón porque son los primeros padres de nuestros hijos. Ellos son los que educan a nuestros hijos y soy muy agradecida con todos los maestros.
Okay, she says she wants to welcome all the teachers and welcome, thank you. And she's very appreciative. She's very thankful, uh, because the teachers are great with our students and she said they are the first teachers for, for our kids, or like parents, I guess.
Soy muy orgullosa de mi distrito. Tengo casi cerca de cincuenta años participando en este distrito. Y yo hice un juramento que no me iba a retirar de este distrito hasta que Dios me llevara para el cielo, no sé para dónde.
She said she's very involved. She's been involved for many, many years. She said fifty years. She's been very involved in the school district. She said she's very involved. She's been involved for many, many years. She said 50 years. She's been very involved in the school district and she's passionate. She cares for this district and that's why she's here.
Ya como les digo, bienvenida a los maestros y a toda la comunidad que está aquí de Salinas. Estoy muy orgullosa que como les digo, yo soy participando en este distrito y he ido a otros distritos y no me gustan porque allá maestros y padres se pelean ahí en la cota y eso no se ve bien, estarse peleando maestros con padres.
She really wants to emphasize that she really thinks very highly about this district because she sees a lot of positive where other districts, she sees teachers and parents and board members against each other. So she's very proud to be part of this district.
Y ojalá que los maestros sigan como siguen echándole ganas a nuestros niños porque nuestros niños es el futuro del mañana y yo estoy muy agradecida con los maestros.
She hopes that the teachers continue to put in their personal best effort because she's very proud of them because she sees a lot of positive things, a lot of gains in our students.
Y ahorita voy con la mesa para que escuchen lo que les voy a decir porque ustedes están para poner este, las metas de nuestros hijos. Ustedes para eso los elegimos para que se sentaran ahí y yo quiero por favor que apoyen mucho el programa de doble inversión. ¿Por qué es el doble inversión? Yo lo tengo de, lo tengo de, ¿cómo se dice? De modelo. Porque yo mi nieto los puse en doble inversión en la escuela de los padres cuando ellos no les tocaba esa escuela, pero yo saqué una forma, la llené y me dejaron estar en la escuela de los padres.
Okay, so she now, she's directing to you guys, to the board members, and she's saying that it's her expectation from you guys is that you guys support our dual immersion program. She believes in the dual immersion program. She had, she enrolled her grandchildren in the dual immersion because she believes in that program and they went to the father's school.
Mi nietecita estuvo en...
Yes, your honor.
Oh. Les iba a decir de una nieta que tengo que fue a la escuela de los padres, que fue a Kinder y ella cuando salió de Kinder, salió leyendo, escribiendo y matemáticas y esos sueños no se me van a olvidar y una niña de Kinder supo tanto. Gracias por esto.
Really quickly, she just wanted to say that her granddaughter was very successful in the dual immersion program. Generally, that's what she said.
Thank you.
Ms. Carr, with children in the district. It's great to come for a new school year, to see all the awards for all the great workers here that we have that are so dedicated to our children. Mr. Kim, in the last meeting, I really appreciated after a couple of years, finally getting an answer about just the irregular practices with some of the contracts as it pertains to the website. And so we're glad that you spoke about that and spoke about that's not a good practice to have. I delivered a Public Records Act request because I've not gotten answers. Specifically, the board passed in, at the 622-15 meeting, Resolution Number 145043. It had to give $200,000 for payment for the playground for all drawn. And specifically because there wasn't time as we get done, it authorized the superintendent to basically enter into a contract to get it done ASAP. Specifically says at the bottom, "The Board of Education can delegate to the district's superintendent or such person they designate to enter in a contract. Administration will bring this contract back to the board for ratification. Administration will accomplish this on August 10, 2015." That was not done. On the August 2015 meeting, it was not done subsequent to that. This summer, the payment at two of the schools were over $500,000. So there's a big difference between this and that. And there's nothing back reported to the public or as far as I know, there's a board that has the final contracts. So I specifically asked for all the contracts related to this, the contracts related to Phase 1 and Phase 2, and actual payouts. And then lastly, Prop 30 was passed to stabilize funds for the district. And so I'm asking for specific new hires and additional hires for the district office. We get talking here about, you know, the pending problem with Prop 30 being possibly eliminated, but a lot of the extra people that are being hired, it doesn't seem to match up with the talk. And so I specifically, since Prop 30 was to do about, was the taxpayers giving extra funds to stabilize and reduce class size? I want to see where the money was being spent. I think the public should know where the money has been spent outside of the classroom. Thank you.
Shawn, just a clarification.
Yes, sir.
What you said was that you wanted the district office positions, but on this public record, you're asking for all job descriptions?
All job descriptions. It specifically should say district level and district office. It's a difference. Thank you. Clarification, if we can email and get any clarification to on that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Well, welcome back to another school year. For the record, Frank Dart, I have a child in Mission Park. Just three things I want to address real quick, hopefully in three minutes. As you know, we made a public records request for those 33 pages of emails that came back from Maria Giannini to Martha Martinez. Now, for those of you who don't know who are listening, Maria Giannini, she's the leader of the DLPA and the Salinas City Elementary Foundation. A lot of those emails, we saw that were redacted by your lawyers and we're trying to pinpoint exactly the reasons why. When documents are, in this case, portions of documents are withheld, we believe the law requires that you identify with some specificity, the provisions of the government code on which you relied on in withholding those records. Now, of your lawyers and their infinite wisdom, they basically said, well, we can withhold these records for any number of reasons, but we're not going to tell you which one, so you decide for yourself which one it is. So I can't read their minds. Again, it doesn't comport with what the law says you need to do. So Ms. Martinez then informed me in an email that the emails were redacted under Government Code Section 6254, which provides exemption from disclosure for records that are personnel, medical, or similar files. If that's the case, my only concern is why Ms. Giannini, who's to my knowledge not on staff at the school district, why is she transmitting information to our superintendent that's similar in nature to personnel or medical files? I hope that you can answer that for me. Because if she's not a district employee, she shouldn't be talking about personnel issues, not about teachers, not about medical conditions with staff or students, et cetera. So you could be exposing yourself to some legal liability if that's occurring. Second, we were also advised, and I was asked to relay this information, that Ms. Giannini is sending correspondence to parents at Lincoln, essentially informing them who their child's teacher is going to be in this coming school year. Before it's publicly released, my daughter Lacey actually came up to me. She's really excited today. I get to find out who my teacher is tomorrow on Mission Park. That's been the typical practice. I've had children in the district since 2003, so 13 years or so. The teacher assignments are revealed on the last day of summer break. So somehow, Ms. Giannini is being given access to your staff assignments and is out there informing parents ahead of time. And I don't know if this has been addressed by previous administration, but I was asked to relay that to you because apparently it's still a problem. I understand she may also be soliciting contributions on behalf of the district in her correspondence to the parents, which in our research may actually be an Ed Code violation, but I'm going to let your lawyers at La Zona Smith research that because I'm sure they'd love to send you the bill. Finally, we made a, actually, we have a new public records request. I know Shawn gave you one, but this one is from Building a Better Board. I don't have time to talk about it in 10 seconds, so I'll just say that if you have any questions, all the items in here, we'd like to take a look at. Some of them are contracts for the assistant superintendents and credit card statements as well for the superintendent of the school board. So if you have any questions, please just feel free to email me.
Again, if you could hold your applause. Good evening.
My name is Cynthia Shaker. I've been making inquiries for two years now. Some inquiries are still outstanding from two years. As a matter of fact, I just sent an email to you, Superintendent Martinez, a few weeks ago, and as usual, I've received no response. Shawn is saying he hasn't received responses. Frank's saying, you know, there are parents who are asking questions and we don't receive responses. And I thought pretty much all parents were treated this way because, well, aren't they? And we have all these examples. After all, this board allows a prejudicial and discriminatory environment to flourish. Then Building a Better Board released 33 pages of email between Superintendent Martinez and Maria Giannini. Now there is proof, not all parents are treated equally in the superintendent's world. Please, tell me, Superintendent Martinez, why do you reply to Maria Giannini and not to me?
If you would please press your comments to the board.
Okay. Is it because I'm too short? Is it because I'm too small, too loud, too truthful, too what? Is it because I don't come from money? Is it because I don't have the right family name? Is it because I'm not connected enough, influential enough, smart enough, Salinas enough, bully enough? Is it because I'm a pest? Am I inconsequential? Am I not the right color? Do I not speak the right language? Name another parent who emailed you and you arranged a meeting with numerous senior administrators within 24 hours at a restaurant, no less. I wonder who picked up the bill on that one. Name another parent who emailed you and you approve a financial arrangement within a half an hour. Look at the teachers in the audience and tell them why. They are using their own money and are not getting properly reimbursed, let alone within half an hour. Name another parent. Even with the overwhelming evidence of impropriety, including a financial relationship between the Salinas City Elementary School District and the Dual Emerge Program advocates, the board refuses to do their job and put DLPA in their place. In the wake of the board's discriminatory and prejudicial practices and outright disregard of their very own governing policies is the collateral damage of broken trust, but that's just philosophical speak. The real life human casualty is the greater student population being sacrificed for a social experiment under the guise of Lincoln and Dual Emerge Academy. The community was so hopeful when you were hired. We fought hard to bring in someone who we believe would be about the business of educating all of our children and not succumb to the pervasive and accepted void of accountability and transparency. Above all, we just wanted you to leave with integrity. Ultimately, the district is the school board's responsibility, not yours. We had great expectations that you would rise above this lazy and stubborn school board. Instead, now you are just an extension of what they perpetuate. But who am I? Who are we in your world? I say this so that others may hear and know the truth, not because you will take to heart what nameless and faceless parents say. I say this so that no one up there can point and say, I didn't know.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Calley and I'm the homeless liaison and I help to run the Family Resource Center. And board members, you may not be aware of this, but as of July 1 with the new LCAP, we are now not only serving the homeless children, but also our foster youth as well. So right off the bat, first of all, I'd love to thank all of our administrators and teachers and classified and support staff and Martha, you, and also all of you board members for your extreme support for our school district. And this morning was a fine example of that family community that we are continually working on to build and support one another. So thank you for that. We ended the school year with 3,118 homeless kids. And that's the highest we've ever been, but finally, when the faculty department gave everything back and what they're reporting to the California Department of Ed and Calpads is 3,118 homeless children. So we're pretty high. Some of the activities that are coming up that are very positive this Saturday, the kids that are at the Women and Children Shelter, we will all be meeting at a ranch, kind of a day at the ranch. So lots of bunny and horses and donkeys and rabbits and you know what, and they're all going to be able to experience that probably for the first time in their lifetime. The following Saturday on the 20th, and this is where we'd love to have support from all of you as well, is Ralph Boza, who owns, you know, Bagel Bakery and Gino's, et cetera, and Possibility's right across. He's the coach of the girls varsity soccer team at Salinas High. They're all coming over in their uniforms and giving a half-day soccer clinic to some of our homeless and foster students at the Family Resource Center at Sherwood School. So there'll be about 60 kids, boys, that will get that opportunity. Simultaneously, Santa Catalina and Notre Dame Girls will collaboratively will be leading how to make nutrition snacks at home, not Red Hot Chicos, right? And then how to play family games so they can intern teach your siblings. And then also how to do arts and crafts. And then a third activity that same day is, community members can come in and decorate campus bags for foster and homeless parents, as well as their little children decorating small bags for the foster kids and the homeless kids. So we would appreciate your help on that. The following Saturday on the 27th, we're taking 65 kids to an NFL, NCAA, and it's put up by Prison Fellowship Ministries, football camp for the fourth year in a row. So we need volunteers for that as well. So that's August in a nutshell for the next three Saturdays. So thank you, guys.
Hold on. Ms. Rolles?
I just wanted to add, there's an excellent article on the Monterey County Weekly on housing situation in Salinas, Monterey County. I personally gave the reporter a tour of East Salinas and where a lot of our children live. Mr. Tony Barera was, also did the same thing in another area of Salinas. So if you haven't read the article, Monterey County Weekly, I encourage you to read that. It's very good.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public deciding to address the board? Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. Do you have any items to move?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to address items 7, 8, 9, and 10. Just a few questions that I have in regard to...
Okay, Mr. Stroud, I want the pool, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Anyone else? Any concerns with the board? All right, then, do I have a motion to pass the consent items with the exception of 7, 8, 9, 10?
So move.
Okay, the motion is second to approve the consent items with the exception of 7, 8, 9, 10. All in favor, say aye. All votes, five, zero, and then aye. Mr. Stroud, you have the floor.
Yes, the question is for... My, I have a concern, noticing all this information in regard to the relationship we have with the schools of education of these, I believe it's four different universities. And the question is, are any of these universities or their schools of education addressing the biliveracy certification credential or not? And the reason why I'm asking this is because, you know, we see how our programs are growing, our dual language immersion, our, I don't know, our bilingual...